I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that needs to recuse themselves from any business tonight? Minutes of the November town board meeting and workshop and the minutes of the public hearing for the 25 budget meeting. Has everyone? Looked at those?
Yes, yes.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded and approved, the minutes all in favor. Opposed, so carried. Any public comments before we get started with the regular meeting? Very good. Supervisors report. The only thing I really have to report on. And I'm sure people watch the news, they'll, they know what's going on between Albany Med and CDP HP. And we have CDP HP insurance. So I've already talked to our agent and she's on top of it and whether they settle or not, we are still covered until the end of March and we have a 90 day grace period. So we'll see what happens, but I'm.
Sorry Jim, what's going on with CDCHP?
Oh, Albany Med claims that CDP HP is not paying them. So they won't, they're negotiating, they won't sign a new contract with CDP HP until they pay up. Supposedly it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million item. It's a negotiating thing. And some people say, don't worry about it, they'll end up settling sooner or later within the 90 day grace period. I know the county has CDH, CDP HP. And all their county employees are on, covered on that. I think we have, well, it used Columbia Memorial. I think we only had one employee, maybe. Willie is not used as Columbia Memorial, so. Anyway. If they don't settle. And Albany Med won't accept. CDP, CDP HP insurance, then we have to find another carrier.
Okay.
But like I said, we have until March. Hopefully. They'll figure it out. That's all I have to report as far as the supervisor that will go on to the town highway report.
We've been keeping busy with our equipment ready. There you go, all the trucks against the North State safety inspection. Right, your expenses. We got our mowers stacked back, the new mower mounted Tuesday, and then we have to return. And that's two months, we haven't started sending that. And we got to do it on a lease mortgage, I got that. A new truck update. Bill Davis related Andrews planting issues. For the current transmission was the problem. And our remaining in these health dollars just reimbursed into the vending machine yesterday. And they got, I did my annual material visit, we won. How long? And their price will go up again. We need to. Let us serve people's ass. For the board on different materials. Everyone did our routine and. I'm free to go after any county bids.
So it would seem to me we have two choices. We accept that bid and approve it, or we can rebid all the material. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion, we accept the bid.
And we're probably going to end up with the same bid.
The public notice went out, was in the paper. Jim sent it to all of the suppliers that we normally get bids from. I will say that we used to get like five or six different companies would bid, but over the years it's gotten less and less and less and whether they're just not supplying anymore the things that we need. Well, he's already sent them. He's already sent them the bit, the. But you did, oh, go ahead.
They haven't been bidding many times at all, quite honestly, from what I've seen.
And again, the county goes through the same thing and they'll piggyback on the county.
And that was gonna be the question. But you can piggyback on the counties. So.
My story was that $58 gone, like that, now it's gonna be $13.
You talk to any of the contractors around, well, I mean, look at any of the places building out there, look, any project. Everything's going up, right? Materials keeps going and going. Hauling keeps going, the trucks keep going, we're getting the price on our trucks. They're facing the same things at the gravel banks, you know, there are loaders and, you know, there are no gravel bags around. And that's just it, most of them are shut down. Through the different regulations and.
We saw, when you say the gravel used to have red wave.
Yep.
We don't have any of them coming in anymore.
Right, so this is just like the price to truck it in, yeah.
Like, you know, you used to be able to buy sand and all that stuff from Snickles and they were shut down because of a few different things. So there's a bunch of them just going out of there and now. Everybody's hauling a lot further, you know, it's the trucks have gotten bigger and we've gotten the haul along distance if that's where it's available from.
Well.
There, nobody can.
I called, a couple of years ago, I was playing, I didn't have white gravel, it's on Connecticut. And they were way higher than what Caloosah was, and I don't even have any, so I'm trying to get some more air and. It's something. I never gonna get in over there.
No. We've been back.
Yep. Yeah. So the, the other, the only other close, well, they're not close, but there's Tallinn and Kingston.
Yeah, but, but by the time you go home from there and everything, you're gonna pay just as much and gonna, you're gonna go pass over tolls and wear out your truck, so.
If I'm gonna make a comment, I think I was going to be answering, three or four months ago, I had a call. I'm not sharing. Well, that's the biggest problem.
There's no small gravel banks around anymore. You gotta travel to these big companies, that's, that's just the way it is anymore. There's no, no small gravel banks around anymore, so. So David made a motion, does anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. You're done? Town clerk? Next collect.
Um, Jim went up to the county for me yesterday, I think, Tuesday, and picked up the tax bills. I can't get without any information on them until the full board meeting, which is at the end of the month. Um, I'm not allowed to disclose what's in them, um, but I do have them, I will be going through them and you all will be getting a nice New Year's card from me. The ag exemption paperwork renewals and the senior exemption renewals for the seniors that are under a certain wage or amount have gone out, they're starting to come back in. Renee is asking that this year, every, everybody who sends in their renewal who has one, to send the full amount that we're asking for. So if you have to supply your income, um, he asked that you do your sign your form and provide the income all at the same time. When we're getting things in and drips and drabs and we're dealing with, I think there's well, probably around 170 ag exemptions, I think. When, when they're coming in little bits here and there, things, things can fall through the cracks, but if they're coming in as full packets, we're easier to keep up with. Um, and I apologize for everything going out a little bit later for this meeting. My computer decided to explode, then my, um, printer decided to follow suit and my whole office equipment just went this week. Um, so I didn't get to make all the copies and stuff that I wanted to for you guys, so I apologize for that. And one last thing, which I found out today, I've been having people come in looking for uh, garbage recycling permits. I don't have them this year, the county did not bring them to me this year. And so I thought that was kind of odd. Um, I found out today that, um, only certain towns have them and it's mostly towns where the where the, uh, stations are. So I have a list in my office of towns that are selling them. I only sold, I think, two last year, which may be one of the reasons why I wasn't on the shortlist of people to get them. Um, but there is a, a good list of towns and I have it with their hours and stuff for people who want to get them. It's my understanding that they're not selling the recycling tags at the stations this year, that there was a problem of some sort last year and they decided to not have them there this year, so. I think that's it.
Any, uh, town board member comment?
BB Barrett's office replied today, uh, they're going to help us in any way possible. Um, I've also been in contact with Central Hudson regarding the relocation of the utility pole and they have offered to do that, um, as soon as the state gives them the okay, and they said they will coordinate, um, with the other utilities, uh, when that happens. In addition, I sent out a letter to, um, the head of the District Eight DOT in Poughkeepsie, New York State DOT today. Um, telling them that we want to petition their decision from 2023. Um, wherein they said that they would not change the two-way slip in front of Simons to a one light, one-way slip because the crash, the crash data didn't support the need to do so. So um, I also forwarded him the copy of the report from GPI. Um, they said they would reopen the evaluation and get back to me on that. Um, otherwise Jim, um, has been in touch with the county regarding, uh, stenciling and re-striping of the county roads. Um, and he's given me the name of somebody else to, to contact in that regard. So. Still pushing forward on that? Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I don't really have much, um, um, the grant application for the pavilion is in DeeDee Barrett's office and we're waiting to hear on that. I'm not sure when that's gonna happen. Um, we'll see. But it's been completed and submitted. Um, housing committee was quiet this week, this month. Don't have a whole lot to report, we're gonna start up again in January. After the holidays.
Colleen or David? New business. Discussion on the 25 organizational meeting resolutions.
Didn't print them out, as I said prior, my, I figured you all had seen them and given me your comments, which I incorporated all of them to them. Um, and sent it back around to all of you. If there's anything else between now and, um, the meeting, you can always change it. I put it on the agenda because I didn't know if there was anything that you all wanted to discuss.
I don't think so.
Well, we need to set a date for that meeting. How everyone on January was back in at 6:00 PM.
What day?
Forty second.
I will be away right, I can't, I don't have an appointment.
Here, I'll share with you. Our technology is starting to go down. Um. As far as I know, we're gonna do a Zoom that night, so Amy, you'd be able to zoom in. Um, and it'll be at six and then the planning board meeting will follow at seven.
So it will be a very short meeting.
And it will be via Zoom, the whole meeting?
No, no, just Amy's, Amy's gonna be out of town, so they don't give her the option to be able to be at the meeting.
Six o'clock, okay. Make that happen.
Okay, so that's when the meeting will be.
Are we gonna talk about the roof?
I'll be.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going down the list here.
Oh, it's on the old business? Oh, it's on the back.
Um. No, it's not, but I would, I will bring it up. Under old business. Uh, and the next thing on our new business, um, was we discussed this a little bit at the fact meeting last Saturday about possibly hiring a grant writer. What are your thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea, to be honest.
I, I would just like to mention. We know we need to do some work on our pool. And I don't know how many of you read the Millerton paper or the news out of Millerton, but they got a $6 million grant put in a new swimming pool. I mean, we don't need $6 million, but it would be nice. Where you get some money under that swims grant. And I'm certainly not a grant writer.
I think they, they got it through the New York Swims program.
Yeah.
I did, um. There's to determine whether it's a disadvantaged community and a community in need of, of resources, recreational resources, you have to use a formula developed by the United State Parks. And Millerton is within Duchess County and we are within Columbia County and it's completely different regions and when I did all of the calculations, we didn't fit the minimum criteria to even submit one. But I feel like we should continue pushing to do it anyway. Um, but we didn't meet that, that first round minimum criteria. You had to have like 20 points and we came in with 13. We weren't disadvantaged enough and we weren't as high of a recreational need in this, because we're being, we're not, they're being looked at in relationship to like Poughkeepsie and areas like that. They're, they're more of the southern and we're being kind of looked at where we have Lake Taconic in our backyard, we have all these things that are recreational activities, so they're gonna push it, although even though they have Red Pond. You know, it, it just didn't score that well for us. So, we may have to look at other funding sources too, you know, there can be other ways that we can do it under other prod, you know, municipal projects that we could do, so. I believe there is a plan for the Swims program to come out again.
And, um. Who could we talk to about that? I mean, would that be Michelle Henty or?
It's the New York State Dormitory Authority is who actually does it, yeah. Yeah.
But as you said, I mean, there are other, some other funding sources and I'm, I'm a little worried they're gonna be drying up.
Yes.
Within the next year because that, you know, if any money comes down from the federal government, who knows what's gonna happen there and you know, it trickles down through the state. But I think from my experience with grant writers and the municipality, like, they know where to go, they know where to find them, they know, that's what they do, that's what they get paid for. So I think you mentioned a grant writer and I sent around the resume of the the guy that we used before and I don't, I don't remember what he charged us for that. Maybe we could find that somewhere, but, um, I think it's definitely worth looking into.
I, I think it's worth looking into it. I mean, the big part of it is, is research, is knowing where to find the grant that you're looking for and understanding how your project fits with, like, the right sources to fit your project to and where to find that. And that does take a significant amount of time to do. And, um.
Like in the portable housing world, when we didn't set the county with Chris Brown, he was like seven different places that they're putting, but I don't know where they are, I don't, I don't know how to apply for them.
Right.
But I want to do it, so there's all these, you know, big pockets of money out there, but none of us know how to do that. I mean, Colleen sounded great though, getting all the things done, so. I'm not gonna try to find them, I've worked with our representatives, but I think it's worth exploring to see what they are doing.
Yeah, because it's a full-time job in and of itself. They're actually, they are professional people that get paid to do that and yeah, it, because it does take, I mean, they, just the research alone, I can tell you, takes, can take a lot of time to do, so. Um, some of them I think get paid based on like the percentage of the amount that you're awarded. But I don't know that that is always great because it doesn't always reimburse that that whole research part of it.
Right.
But I think, yeah, it would depend on the entity. The one that I'm aware of is, is Teagan Bond or Teagan, yeah, Teagan Bond, they're out of Rhinebeck. They will do that, they work a lot with a lot of municipalities. And they're engineers too, so that they can also kind of help.
Have a knowledge of that.
Work a project together for you, which is nice.
Well, could we have a contact with them or get a resume or something like that?
Yeah.
Well, I think we've got to get, you know, a couple of different options, see what they cost and then look, you know, figure out what we're gonna do.
Yeah, see if it's something that we can feasibly do.
Mm-hmm.
I can contact them and if you get I have a number for them. If you can get me a couple of other ones. I'll do a little research myself. Actually, I'll talk to some other, uh, town supervisors and see if they move. If you're willing to go that route, I will be there.
Yeah, let's look into it and get as much information as we can and then make a decision.
All right. Bonnie brought up about the roof and I gave you, um, the bid that we got or the price from, um, which one was it, Phelps?
Price came in at thirty thirty-six thousand some dollars. And then I had to deal with a solar panel. I called the number, I don't remember where I found it, but I found the number for the company that put them up there. Evidently they were bought out by some comment, because when I dialed the number, whoever answered said, well, it was some comment, so. Dealing with them hasn't been easy, but finally I did get a quote from that's $38,000, $38,520, take the panels off and put them back on. Unfortunately, I don't think there's a lot of other companies out there that I can contact that, so. I don't know, I wouldn't know who else to talk to. And the other thing is they have anywhere between a three to six month backlog.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Is there any reason that it's, that we can't do the roof and then we deal with the, have them, have them being installed panels? Do the roof and not have them doing the rest side.
I suppose, like, define another company that.
Could we talk to them and see if they would do the, the de-install? Like first and not worry about the reinstall till their timeframe or whatever, when we decide? Because that, you know, they have to know that's gonna really impact their roof.
It's, yeah, I know, and it's really surprising. Um. Take them off. Oh, where did it go?
It's $11,900.
Yeah, look what it is to put them back on. I know.
Possible for, instead of roof swelling on the roof, to do a ground, a ground mount?
I'm sure, I'm sure there is, but it would, you know, it would be more money.
To put them on the ground and to put them back on the roof?
Well, you gotta put everything in the ground to mount them on, so. You'd have to pay for that.
Run the wire and everything.
Hmm.
Yeah, and you wouldn't be pulling them off when you need to do the roof again.
Well, yeah, that's true. Very true. But I won't be around.
Well, I think worth investigating.
I can get a quote for that too, if you, if you.
There are companies around.
Yeah, there is, but I don't know any of them, I have to.
If you want, I'll work on this myself, I'll come back with information. I'll talk to Sun.
It's not gonna get done before spring.
Yeah, so we can do some research and see what we can come up with.
I'll talk to Sun comment and find out.
Hey, we can get a grant.
Okay, we'll do a little more, do a little more research on the solar panels.
Yeah, they're 14 years old.
I believe they claimed 20 to 25 years.
That's right, I was just gonna say that.
We, when we put inverters on them, uh, two years ago, um, that was a discussion for a while. The original cost of putting the solar panels.
The original cost of putting the solar panels up, uh, we got a, um. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant and we paid thirty thousand dollars to install them. And then we had to put inverters on them two years ago. And. I I don't wanna. We did find out how much we had saved using them and quite honestly, um. I have a different opinion. On this than than, uh, some of my other board members because, um. Two years ago, we still hadn't saved enough money to equal the thirty thousand dollars that we had put in. So if we're gonna dump another forty thousand dollars in, you'll never get the cost back, but that's just me. But you do have to get them off if you wanna repair the roof, so we've been. You you never know, that just says. You have to get them off to do the roof.
Well.
Capable of going back on and how long are they gonna last? I I agree. That's why we're gonna do a little more research. I I will find out what they say about. Because they must, I would assume they have to know that if they take solar panels down that are fourteen, fifteen years old. They can probably tell you already if it's cost efficient to put them back up. And I would assume the way. Technology in this world has changed. They're gonna tell you that those are not efficient to go back up, but I don't know that for certain. Says this estimate is good for ninety days, so. So they can't even, it it, well, I think it's it's, we have to accept it within ninety days and then they'll hold that price. Is what I think this reads, but I'll have more information at the next meeting.
Jim, I'm could could they take this quote and actually? Hold on a minute. Um, could they actually split this quote in so that you you can go ahead and sign off on the de-install? Get that started. You know what I'm saying, like, they need to resubmit it with a split quote, so you're splitting your de-install and your reinstall?
I would think they will do that because that's why it has two separate prices.
I'm hoping, yeah, cuz that way, cuz we can't wait on the roof.
That's what I mean. I think we should personally, I personally think we should call and say, listen, we need to de-install now. We wanna get the roof fixed as soon as we can. And then we wanna talk about the rest of it afterwards.
Yeah.
That's my philosophy, but.
Yeah, definitely.
It's all something we're gonna have to look into. It's one thing, um, that I know is a big. Concern with solar panels and anything. Even even all the batteries, all your rechargeable batteries, you know, there's a disposal fee for all of those, so.
They were last rated at ninety, were they ninety-eight point two percent efficient?
They were still efficient, yes, but that doesn't mean.
There are, I mean. I've seen entities that'll buy those panels, even though they're less efficient, say for our use. That would use it maybe on like a smaller scale.
Exactly, and you know.
Is there some, like, you could put it out to auction? Why not? But if we were allowed to auction them off, then take and put that into the price of whatever we have to do. I don't know. I don't even know if that's possible, but I know that there are people. Yeah, yeah.
All right, sounds to me like we gotta do a little more research. Whoever wants to take this on, I I I just have to tell you. To get what I got. Was all via email. Nobody will talk to you on the phone. And nobody will even come out here and look at it. It's just, it's crazy, so, Dave? Yeah.
I can do that. That's not a problem.
You you.
They don't scare me.
You go, you go at it and we'll have more to report next month.
Sure.
Okay. Amy, you already updated us on the intersection. Is there any public comment? On anything we've talked about? Could you, could you come up front closer to the to the? Whatever you call that thing, the owl. Who, who? Any other public comment? Okay, we need to do. Some budget adjustments. Does everyone have that paper?
No, cuz the printer died.
No, I printed it. I I handed everybody. Would you, um? Oh, how would I miss those two?
Did that help Amy this afternoon?
So on on the general, on the general side, you'll see that it's it's. It's quite a bit of money. That we're moving from the, uh. Fund balance. You don't have one blank?
All right, gave one to everybody.
Anyway. So the the amount of money we're moving is a lot, but. Monica and I could have sat for two hours and picked through the whole budget and came up with that amount of money. Rather than taking it from the fund balance, but it would have took us two or three hours. So we're not, we're not actually using. All that money that we're moving is still in the budget in different accounts, if you understand what I'm saying. But it was just easier to move it from the fund balance than it was to pick through all the other accounts in the budget. To come up with that figure.
So at the end of the year, of course, the budget, the our, your budget has to be. You know, nothing can be over, none of the lines can be overdrawn. So basically what this is, is. Going by what was in the financial report. And what we paid for those line items out of the. For the December bills. We came up with these numbers to try to make them total out to zero because legally we can't go into twenty twenty-five with anything in depth. On any of the budget lines. So it's really just shifting the money from lines that underspent to lines that overspent.
It's amazing.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, there's probably gonna be a couple more at the organizational meeting. Because this didn't take into account all of the payrolls and there will be no more pay, the December payrolls and we were going by the November. Um, financial report, so it's, um. You know, this, it's, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes sense.
I need a motion in a second to. Prove the, uh. Budget adjustments for the general side and we have one more for highways.
I make a motion, we, uh. Approve the transfer for the general side. The budget adjustments.
Second.
All in favor?
I think too, what Joe was trying to explain too, is that some of the lines only have, are are only over by a little. Bit or under by a little bit, so at the end of the day, when we close out for the year, it actually ends up flushing. And whatever's left over that we didn't spend is going into the fund. So it's all gonna wash, but in order for us to be right with the accountant. This is what we have to do.
So the biggest one is for the attorney line?
Yeah.
And then. Central data.
That's, um, the newsletter, the website.
Central data and the planning board are the two biggest ones. By far.
Right.
I mean, that, those two, those two categories do fifty percent of the cost almost.
Building inspector payroll is the biggest one.
We voted, uh, yes, okay, well.
Right, the building inspector payroll is bigger than the others.
Now, eighty ten point one three is actually, um, the building department's secretary.
Okay.
Um, and then the eighty ten point four two is the planning and zoning. Um, their expenditure account.
Right. Got it. No, that's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, then we have, uh. We need to do a budget adjustment for the highway. That figure is a pretty big figure too, but.
So we had revenue for this. We got the, uh, insurance check for the mower. We sold a couple of truck bodies. And we got a check for a driveway that had, or our road that had to be fixed. Because of the damage to the road they did when they were working there. And then there's. So. The thirty-five thousand some dollars. That we're moving from the fund balance has al- has already been put in there actually. So it's not like we're.
So it's a wash, right?
We just have to move it into the right lines and convey that well.
Got it.
Um, I make a motion for to approve the budget adjustment for the highway.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion to approve the warrant, pay the bills.
I'll make a motion.
All favor?
Aye.
So carried. Any more comments from the. Yes.
So out of curiosity, Devin, I don't know. The, uh, we just. President, what I thought, putting solar panels on. And now having the roof cut to be done. The solar panels taken off, so forth, so on, has it actually benefited us and saved us money? Knowing everything that we know now, I guess my theory, if I could say I have wrong.
Do I have the answer to that?
Yeah, we have to calc, we would have to calculate it out.
But.
I guess what I'm asking in theory is.
Have they paid for themselves?
Yeah, whether it's putting a new set on. Or paying to have these ones taken off or they're worth. Going, you know, we're putting these back on, has it actually benefited the town, the? The building, uh, whatever, in whatever.
Guess the best answer I can give you is I don't, I don't believe they've paid for themselves yet, so I don't know.
Just a point of information. Um, I have them on my roof. I've had them for four or five years and they pay for themselves already. The issue usually comes in when it's grid tied. Which means that you're pumping electricity in. It depends upon who the company is, like, we have Central Hudson up here. If they're actually accepting that energy and giving you a credit back on it. Because most of the time, my bill is like twenty bucks a month. And then in the winter time when there's no sun, it then starts to increase a bit and then comes back. But it really does depend upon what the electrical company is giving you back as credit. And that varies with every single. I I have no idea about that. I just wanted to. Piece of information.
And Monica was bringing up a good point is that we're only allowed to sell back, what is it, ten?
I think it's ten percent. I could be wrong, um.
Right.
You know, we produce and once we've met what we need for the month. And that normally is, we only ever meet what we meet in the summertime. Once we've meet, met that need, anything extra that we. Produce is pumped back into the grid. And I believe we only get credited for like ten percent of what we pump back into the grid, because we're not, we're not a resident.
So that would make sense with what you said.
Right, right. Right.
I guess I have that. So that might dictate what goes back. I was just curious if it's actually benefited the town or anything.
We, we probably. We probably go maybe two months where we have a really, really low bill. But we also have to pay for our hookup, the line, so there's extra additional fees and stuff too.
That's why I said, I mean, now you gotta take them off to do the roof. And the panels aren't actually bad yet, but the roof, we can pretty have to spend the money. You know, I mean, so like that's.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh. No, I mean, I need a motion in a second to, uh, move into a. Executive session for personnel reasons.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session. For personnel matters.
So we did our speech. All right, you wanna second the motion?
I will second the motion.
All in favor? Opposed, so carried. We wanna hang around, we'll be back.
I guess I gotta start, I gotta start making them use the microphone, I guess. Whether they like it or not. No other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, let's go back.
Okay. Motion to close the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? So carried, motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor, opposed, so carried. I was just gonna say. Everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you January second at six o'clock.